Next department on the agenda is the Fire Department with Chief Barron and like we have, it's thirty-two, thirty-three. Good morning, Chief.
I usually start this out with a brief overview of modern activity in the Fire Department. In calendar year sixteen, Quincy Fire Department responded to ten thousand six hundred and seven incidents. That's up seventy-six from last year. In two thousand sixteen, there were seven hundred and seventy-four fires in Quincy. That was up twenty-five years from last year. In two thousand sixteen, the total dollar loss for all fires in Quincy was one million four hundred and fifty-one thousand, in less than prior year. In two thousand sixteen, responded to six thousand five hundred and eleven medical emergencies, including that shooting four hundred and ninety-eight motor vehicle accidents. That was up a little over two hundred incidents from last year. In two thousand sixteen, I'll go to the wider page, Quincy Fire Department responded to one thousand three hundred and fifteen false alarms, both intentional and unintentional. That's down sixty-two from the prior year. Continuing a triangle of false alarms due to system malfunctions being reduced. And I credit that to the fire system that was instituted as an ordinance in the city. The goal of that fire system again was not to collect revenue or punish property owners, it was to encourage them to repair their systems and to eliminate some of these calls and provide a better availability of fire apparatus for the incidents we're required towards four years. The budget you have before you has an increase of a little more than two point three million. A large part of that budget increase is sixteen new positions of firefighters within the city. That's in keeping with the goals of the mayor's office, the union president, Mike Malanzo, is here with us today. And this part, it has repeatedly looked to have the rescue truck put in service. Two years ago, money was appropriated for technical rescue training, and this has powered up the process in anticipation of having rescue cars back in service. The other increase is largely contractual with some smaller lines for much-needed radios, building maintenance increases, and firefights turnout here. And kind of the technical questions.
The questions for Chief Barron, Councilor Calmucci?
Morning, Chief. Always a pleasure. So, how do you feel about our staffing levels in the Fire Department now?
We are up to very close to what we had in two thousand three.
And that was RFP, right?
Um, not exactly, but, you know, it was a time when we had all of the current apparatus in service full-time. So, we're in a much better place. The rescue truck is vital to the fire response within the city, and certainly a city of this size, it wants to be in it full-time.
And in terms of, so, I don't think you actually answered my question, but let me just ask it a different way. So, in terms of where the city's at now, population-wise, are you comfortable with the number of personnel that you have, would you foresee that we still could add more and you'd be more comfortable with the current situation?
Well, I think we've addressed-
But we can't give you more, so, it's not like, it's not like it's an answer that has any true effect, but it's helped us know for future budgets, for this budget, I mean.
Sure. Well, you know, the budget for our process is a bit of give and take, and this is-
At least the department gives, you take, according to Chief Keating, and some years you find a department gives, at least the department takes.
Well, this appears to be on you.
Yes, correct.
And, so, moving forward, we're certainly in a ready-to-response. We're in very good shape. Due to challenges, I'd like to address some of our IT issues, and I could use a couple more staff issues, but certainly we're keeping up with all the demands and we're in a good place.
And so, touching upon the staff demands, how is the, I believe in last year's budget, one of the big ticket items for one of the more notable pieces of your budget was the addition of a financial officer in the department, right? How has that been working out?
Could you just rephrase the question?
Sure. Did last year you add a financial position to the department that didn't previously exist to help with budget management, overtime management, things of that nature?
For the addition of staff?
Yeah, last year. In last year's budget, we added that.
Yes, yes, well-
How has that been working out?
Chris Paul is listed today. He is on top of things. He anticipates some of the issue. He communicates perfectly with municipal finance, so it's been a great improvement and it's been very immediate.
And where are we in terms of overtime planning? I know that obviously that's a piece of this budget too, but how do you feel in terms of where we're at with that?
With overtime?
With overtime, expense. Are we going to be seeing a year-end expense that we're going to have to pay at the end of the fiscal year, or are you halfway through the fiscal year?
Well, we're, we may need, we will need to make an adjustment at the end of the year. Prior years, as I'm sure you're aware, the rescue truck went into service in the difficult winter months, and sometimes, and for most of the time, it was only evenings. This year, working with the mayor, there was agreement in keeping the rescue truck in service full-time, and that did create a overtime burden. We had hoped to get the new hires on the trucks sooner. We started the process of hiring this time last year, and going through that process, it was identified that we would have more vacancies coming here, and so we tried to anticipate them, getting these firefighters in a training program, recruit drill school. It is difficult to identify outside of the city where we can get these numbers trained. We often use the city of Boston, their drill school, and they're very generous with the slots that they have. We also use the state drill school, and they won't take the types of numbers that we were looking to put through. So, a lot of the burden on overtime is not having those bodies on the trucks. And taking, putting together a cadre of instructors, we had to take some of those people off of the suppression force to effectively run a recruit school that would compare to the state school, and so we could provide the best amount of training for these twenty-six new recruits we hired. So, that did create a burden on this year's budget.
This year's budget, meaning two thousand, the budget we're in, or the previous budget which just ended in July?
Oh, the budget we're in.
So, the one that will end, the one that ends in two months?
Sorry?
The budget that ends in two months.
That's great. I thought that was your question.
It could have been. Sometimes I don't even know, Chief. So, you anticipate we're going to have to close a gap within the next couple of months, but that the budget you've requested here of two point one million for overtime will prevent that next year from there being a gap?
That's correct.
Okay, all right. We got the answer. So, just a couple of other quick questions. The hazardous duty pay, what is that? Can you explain what that, what's the hazardous duty line?
Well, Councilor, I imagine everything we do is hazardous.
Right.
That's a budget line that is contractual with the unit.
Okay, so what is it? It's just like a sprinkle in into the salaries in terms of, almost like, not like a bonus, but it's-
That's correct. It's a budget line that is irresectable, right?
Okay. And so, the reason why it went up is based on the contract?
The contract and additional sixteen positions.
Got it. Same with the shift differential?
That's correct, Councilor.
Okay. And what is the shift differential?
Per person?
No, not the amount. What does it mean? What's the shift?
Well, it's for nights and weekends. That's what's contracted in excess of probably excess twenties.
Got it, okay.
And then, contractually, goes up based on percentages.
Okay. And then, lastly, we're about to embark on some construction in the downtown that we've never had such high buildings in the city of Quincy, and I'm just curious if you can speak to our preparedness now, or how we will be prepared to deal with incidents that you guys deal with on a daily basis, but in a large, tall building like is being planned for the downtown?
Well, we work through the inspection services to make sure that the protection within the building is up to code. Fully sprinkled building is designed to hold the fire in check, typically not extinguish it entirely. When you get a building over seven stories, which we have many of in the city already, you're above the reach of our ladders, so it becomes an interior firefight operation, and we're prepared to do that.
So, is that typical, you have seven stories, is that the extent of a ladder's reach in the city?
Well, there are some that are designed larger, but typically, the buildings that we're talking about in Quincy, we treat as a window, but windows building, similar to something that's even below rain. So, the real challenge for that type of a building is the reflex time from the time you get to the curb to the time you get up to a fire. It gives the time to grow a little bit, but, you know, we rely on the designs, and we know they're not always perfect, but that's what you find in all of our larger cities, and that's what Quincy's become.
Right. And I guess that's why I'm asking, we've added a ten-story building in the city of Quincy. Our fire department has never had to address emergency calls on a fifteen-floor before in the city of Quincy, and, you know, in the back of my head, it's a concern that I have, is we're a city that's growing, and we've set this gap of fifteen stories in the downtown, and we don't know what else is going to be developed on, you know, on the parkingway and the rest of the Hancock Lot, and it could be buildings that come about that are fifteen-story buildings. So, it's important to me that we're voting on some of this stuff up here, knowing that the fire department has the resources to do whatever they need to do to make sure that folks in those buildings are safe, as well as folks in our fire department are safe in responding to emergencies at that level. I mean, I don't know, I'm a lawyer, I don't know what it takes, what difference it takes in a fire rescue, or fighting a fire between four-seven and four-fifteen. I don't know. I rely upon you, but I would hope that you would tell us if you need something more, or there's something else that we can do as a council to ensure safety, whether that's in terms of ordinance regarding construction, or, you know, I know when I'm in Boston, I think I see this, I see like brass plates on buildings that seem to have something to do with firefighting information on it, but if there's anything that you or members of your department think could assist as we move into a city that has taller buildings than we typically have in the past, and you think there's anything that we can do by way of ordinance, by way of regulation, to improve safety for buildings, I would certainly welcome that and help you in any way that I could on the council, I'm sure in the college room as well, to ensure that that standard of safety is there for both residents and for our firefighters. Thank you, Chief. Keep up the good work.
Good luck, Councilor.
Thank you.
Chief, a couple comments and then maybe a question or two, but revenue, so, you know, when I first came in, one of the, you know, my role now is, you know, what two city councils, one of the biggest eye-opening educational opportunities that I had was I was fortunate enough, well, you know, I didn't know it at the time, but to go out and participate in the Steel Cabs was dope, right? So, prior time?
That's good.
Right. So, they take the day and they literally run you through drills, and by the time I was in much better shape than I was now, and I can tell you that I was probably sore for about three days, and, you know, smelled like smoke, as my wife graciously pointed out, but my point in all that was, you know, it was literally, you know, a three, four, five-hour crash course, to an extent, in the day, in the life of a firefighter, and, you know, that, that experience, it always just stays forefront of my head, particularly now, but, because, you know, and I live right there in Gen One, right, so I see the apparatus coming in and out of the station, and, you know, it's one thing to kind of know, okay, well, they must be going to an emergency situation, but, you know, having had that experience, and again, it was very minimal, dealing with straw fires, right, you guys are dealing with, fill in the blank, but I say that because it was truly one of the most eye-opening experiences that I had of that city council, and I've come deciding without long committee, my colleagues sitting here today, that we all have been advocates and very volatile, particularly around budget time, of the importance of the rescue truck being live within your fleet, you know, and we took a vote, I think it was last year, to put that in full-time, you know, the recommendation of the mayor, and that's just such a critical piece of equipment, as I think we'd all agree, and just how that affects me and my district. As you know, you know, I represent five senior buildings, so Thousand Sun Avenue, Pecan Avenue, Thomas Street, Twenty-Five, Forty-Five School Street, and, you know, response time in those particular areas when you, you know, see the citizens is absolutely critical. So, knowing that, you know, you have advocated, the men, some who are with us here today, have advocated, you know, to increase the staffing level, which is imperative, you know, I look at this as, so now you have the staffing level, you know, you got to give folks, you know, firefighters, the tools and the opportunities to be successful, because that is a very, very dangerous job. And again, what I saw on my little field trip to the Steel Fire Academy, you know, at the base level and stuff that you guys are dealing with on a daily basis, was quite tremendous. You know, I had a series of questions with an article recycled, and as Councilor Calmucci touched on, but as we consider the build-out of our city, you mentioned the fire suppression system, and, you know, I'm sure that, you know, by COVID, everyone was mandated to have, you know, fire suppression systems, but I guess what I'm interested in, are there different calvers of fire suppression system, or is everything just sort of builder's grade and it's all, you know, a standard issue? And I'll tell you why I'm asking that question.
There is a full NFPA standard on fire suppression systems, and they, there are lesser systems, but they're for one- and two-family dwellings and certain commercial activities. But the buildings that we're talking about are fully sprinkled.
Right.
And so, that's a full NFPA thirteen sprinkler.
And that's the Cadillac standard? That's what I'm trying to figure out. Is the Cadillac standard of fire suppression, sprinkler?
There are some deviations for sensitive electronic equipment, but by and large, it's a full system, and those, those separate systems that are for electronic, sensitive electronic equipment, the people working in those areas have to vacate before the system activates, so they have a pre-order to tell people to get out, but they're very limited, only St. Street, I believe, has one. We don't really have any of them in the city.
So, there's not necessarily an opportunity from your side of the table to advocate for, you know, the top-of-line fire suppression system? It's kind of the standard issue as a release of the code, and all buildings kind of wear the same sprinkler system?
That's correct. That's correct.
Okay. Yeah, because, I mean, again, I compare it with my fellow colleague here, I think that does become, you know, anything that we can do to kind of put, you know, the men and folks that serve in the best position possible to be successful, because those situations can get very, very eerie, and, you know, I kind of read about it after they happen, and it's just like, wow, you know, so it takes a special kind of person to actually, you know, put on the equipment and do that, so I'm grateful for, you know, what they do for the city, in particular, you know, the people that I represent and am worth too, so appreciate it, Kalan, any further questions for Chief Barron and Councilor Paul?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Chief. Good morning. Thank you for coming by. We're going to miss you, by the way, so I'm going to personally miss you.
So, I anticipate being here for a while.
Okay, good, okay. Thank you for passing this hand out, though. I mean, the data that you got out, that I got out of these types of incidents, incidents by stations, runs by aspiras, this is all the official data. How do you compute this? The call comes in and goes and gets computed. Who does this type of service?
Well, if each officer responds to an incident, fire support is computer-generated, and then the fire prevention officer compiles these forms for a budget. So, I have two firefighters up there, the Rexler, firefighter Jimmy Warner, and firefighter Matt S.
This is, this is great. This is great information, and it gives me the data breakdown for each department, each situation, and thank you for passing this on, it gives me a better understanding of everything. I just want to get into a little bit about the overlapping of departments, and what I mean by that is I'm looking at, over two thousand sixteen, there was seven hundred and seventy, seven seventy-nine hazardous incidents, including like, you know, pole lines that went down. This past year, Paul Franz came in from the POC department, and I've been doing a lot of work with him with different trees and branch repairs, and just outside my house to the revenue, we, over the last three years, we had had two times where you guys had to come out, and the branches and the, there was big branches that came down, you guys had to come twice. But just recently, he came out and he did the maintenance of it, just take branches down. Are you seeing a difference in stuff like that, that is helping around the city, that you're getting an overlap of trees being trimmed, or trees being taken down that are dead, that are helping you with your workforce?
Well, that certainly is a big help, and, well, every time we get an ice storm or a hurricane, our calls go up your back, so certainly that maintenance is a key.
Yeah, because I feel that it was up against the last group. We had a list that was very long, and what happened was we started to study over on the list, and they started, as the call was coming in, but just the experience that I was having, we'd come out twice in the last two years, and now it's been done, and this past winter, there was zero problems with the tree. It was just like nothing fell off of it, so they did a great job, and I remember just calling in, and each time we'd get a big storm, like you said, and then something big would come down. It's quite a big tree, but I, looking at this, do you, like Councilor Calmucci, Councilor Paul had said, if you think since two thousand three, are you at that mark of workforce now? Are you still below the marker of how many men that are down on your unit the whole time?
Well, Council, we do it always, any type of chief's level personnel. This response plan, this duty is changed due to the geography. We've got, you know, the train tracks that basically split the city, but we've got three minutes of us. We try to keep our response times within three minutes area out of the city, and so we do have stations that are dramatically visited than others, and apparatus that are dramatically visited than others. Deputy Chief Joe Jackson is here today, he's been working with a lot of IT specialists, and we're setting the goal for coming here to try to help solve that one, but it's very limited as to what we can do, again, based on our geography of the city. So, it does require more stations and apparatus with firefighters on them. I'd love to say that I want a minimum right now of three men on each piece of apparatus. It's typically an officer and two firefighters. Assigned with this new budget, we're one in three on each apparatus. That will allow, depending on vacations and, you know, illness, a lot of the firefighters on the trucks.
Do you have the numbers from two thousand three of what you had for workforce compared to right now?
We have two hundred and eighteen.
Two hundred and eighteen. What do we have right now with the same and twenty-six come on board? And when are they graduating in the next week, or do they graduate yet?
They'll be on the trucks in the morning.
From when?
Congratulations, which are invitations to God, Alex, for the city council.
I do, I do, I do.
And that's next Thursday. They will come back for some specific training, training and health, and again, that's something else that Deputy Chief Jackson has worked on with the mayor's office and the board, but they will be on the trucks in the morning.
And you said two eighteen from two thousand three, what would it be now? What is it today, and what would be?
We'll be, in this budget year, two seventeen.
Yes, how many, how many? You said two hundred and eighteen men from two thousand three, what's the numbers at right now?
I believe we're at two seventeen.
We're at two seventeen, okay.
We're going to count forward into coming budget year, with this budget.
Okay. Just to elaborate for the public, we're a growing city. We've grown since two thousand three, and we're just at the marker of where we were at back then, so moving forward, I'd obviously like to see more. We have to balance it off, like Councilor Calmucci said, when you're inspired, I say please, trying to leave a balance between the two stations. But thank you for all your hard work, thank you for all the men that have come in today. It's my work with the Fire Department, appreciate all that you guys do. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And to you, Councilor Hughes?
Yes, thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just want to thank Chief Barron and his team for the excellent work they do here and the service they provide to the city, so thank you very much. And with that, as the only board counselor who has no firehouse in her board, I'm like the only one, I'd like to approve.
Thank you, Councilor. Motion to approve on the motion, Councilor Forrest.
Thank you. I was, I didn't know if personally I was ahead of me in the lineup. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, for you to the chief. Chief, one, I would say this is basically, you know, we had a difficult fire down in House F-11, and I just want to commend you and your department for your responsiveness and your helping us to the family. They've been, I know they're especially appreciated to you and to me, and they're very tough and tough for our community. I know you provided with us the two thousand sixteen statistics at the year-end, and it's interesting, seven hundred and seventy-four fires in the calendar year, you know, we're responding to a ton of fires, but you got to make people realize the volume, you know, because of so much, plus recognize a lot of the runs, our medical calls, and, you know, automobile accidents, you had actual fires in the city that's occurring. I was impressed about the minimum, the minimum, you know, the on average, straight up by numbers, eighteen seventy-five for the dollar average of the loss, so what we're finding is a lot of fires happening, there's clearly a quick response, and there's minimal damage, and I think that's a particular statistic that I saw that I wanted to make note of. The other comment I had was you referenced some IT issues as challenges moving forward, and I'm curious, is that something that you manage internally within your department, or is that something that you rely upon the city's IT department to manage for you? How is that handled?
The tool?
The IT. In- The IT?
Well, we rely on the city to manage the existing structure that we have.
And everything from radio, all of your technology, the city's managing? The city IT department?
The city IT department, that's correct. We do get some, well, the city's IT department does have personnel within the police station.
Okay.
And Joe Pipdorn, which is helpful to us, is very helpful. He's also very busy, so.
Chuck Fain also sends myself and I think a couple of the council techs, our colleagues, to Joe P., so we're very appreciative of his services. So he also pitches to your department.
That's, that's good.
Okay, I didn't realize that. I think you had a conversation with the IT director as to, you know, what the advice is and what technology you can acquire to the department forward and modernize? You know, who's making those type of decisions?
It's an area that quite honestly I've been a miss in.
You've been a miss?
I have been a miss in a number of aspects of it, so we've had so many other challenges that I really have not been able to move forward in a way that I would like to. The software that we have, it's difficult mining information out of it, it's valuable. And we really haven't internally developed that person. Though the two gentlemen, Fire Prevention, I mentioned, do an excellent job, but really the challenge is to try to, you can see headquarters apparatus, certain apparatus are much busier than others. So in the grand scheme, when we talk about a new public safety headquarters, in anticipation of that, I have asked Deputy Chief Jackson to sort of work on some forms of redeployment that we can do now, but then anticipation of gaining some capability, when we start to look at a new location. So it's a challenge to come in here, to try to work with the software we have, identify the discrepancies and then try to come forward next year with a plan that is more usable and user-friendly for us to address some of these issues.
So, you know, I appreciate that, Chief. I feel like one of the main demonstrations is technology and trying to work with outdated business practices and outdated technology as the city comes in to modernize. Every time the IT budget's, you know, going to be bigger on our agenda, is one of those that I'm always saying, we're not spending enough. It's hard, it's hard, it's hard to utilize, you know, modernize, modern software and use the tools that are available to us in 2017. So that's something I'm glad, it's something you're recognizing and looking to move forward with and I look forward to any support that I can give on that. My last topic, of course, is one, I was really grateful to hear the rescue has been in service. You know, that's something that's been long advocated for. And then there's another apparatus, obviously, that's important to the district that I represent and that's the aquatic deployment of the department. So the boat is staged currently at Engine 6 at the House of. And if we're looking, the boat season's about to get underway, we've got a lot of coastal infrastructure and we're looking to respond. I do hope you had an update on that, what the plan is.
I'm sorry, Council, what was the question?
So the boat, stage at Engine 6, what the plan is for this season?
We've been considering, looking for a location to keep it in the water.
Is the House of Paragon sector, maybe workspace there that would be available to you?
We plan on working with Lieutenant Gillan to try to identify where we can best locate it so we don't have to launch it from moving, which is actually no extreme of that.
And difficult, right? We've talked about the trailer navigation and we have some challenges, obviously, the boat ramp, a ton of restrictions, the boat needs to stay in the water.
We did recently, from over the security, pick up another inflatable, the Russian truck in service. We were going to, it is on the Russian truck right now. We inflated very quickly and we have a 30-host motor that we can put on it. So the plan would be if we needed something in the Ponce River, a squadron area, we would deploy a Russian truck. And part of that, and that would be, we'd be able to launch that fast and moving the boat from Engine 6. So it sort of brings up the possibility of needing that bridge and hull inflatable, the tin house next to the water.
I appreciate that, Chief. That's a good plan. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Council Forrest, Council Lee.
Thank you. Good morning, Chief. I just wanted to say thank you again to the folks over in the North Company Engine Two for inviting us in and really getting to walk through and be more hands-on with their equipment and their uniforms. It was really impressive, you know, learning about the training program and really everything they go through from start to finish when they're responding to a call. As that being said, the uniform allowance here is very minimal, it seems. Only 750, I mean, just for the police department, for the new recruits, you know, appropriated from, I think it was $64,000 and, you know, again, being hands-on and being able to see the uniforms up close, it seems like 750 is such a low number. Again, can't add to the budget, I'm not saying that we should. Can you just explain why the number is so low on this? Because even in fiscal year 17, when we appropriated $750, we didn't spend any of that. So are the uniforms not under this line or is this for a different type of uniform that I'm just not understanding?
I had men to have that figure in the world. That was, that was negotiated under my salary a number of years ago. And my salary structure changed as the unions did. The union negotiated, had the money moved to another line. So where the union did that, I've never touched that number. So it is, it is compensated, but not shown as a line item.
I'm sorry, so you said this is compensated but not shown by line item? What do you mean?
That was about six years ago during the union negotiation. For other benefits, the union did that. But they're still required in the rules and regulations of the department to conform with certain uniform guidelines. Most of the station wear uniforms and dress uniforms, the city still provides personal protective equipment.
And this line would go towards that, should it be? Would this line then go towards, towards those, that sort of other pieces of uniform that would be needed then to have a line? Not to make here that the firefighters are wearing, like you were saying, other pieces of uniform that might be, would be taken out of this line item if it were needed?
Are you referring to the 750 that exists? I should remove that from the budget. I don't use it and it doesn't touch that. It's mine.
No, no, I mean, it's, I thought it was low. I mean, if we're talking about uniforms and equipment for your firefighters, you know, I want to make sure they're all fit with what they need for the dangerous work they do. So it just seemed odd to me that it was such a low number. With all due respect to your department, if that line is not needed and you're sure that it's not needed for any subsequent equipment or pieces of uniform that they need and it's not going to be touched, I do make a motion to cut this number from the budget. Again, just, Chief, if you're saying that the item's not going to be used and it shouldn't have been in the budget to begin with and you know you're not going to need it for this coming fiscal year, then I'd like to make a motion to remove that.
Okay, so the motion on the floor to cut $750. Chief, just before you clarify, you're recommending that that gets cut from the budget?
And I can use it last year. It was part of a contract that I had. It goes back a number of years. When the union negotiated it away, for all the benefits, I didn't feel right taking it, so I didn't use it. So I don't have a problem with it being deployed.
Okay, so you're basically saying remove it because I don't use it?
Right.
Correct. Okay. That being said, non-clerk, if you would please call the roll to cut $750 from the special service. Bottom line, correct? Uniform allowance, special service.
Council Kane.
Yes.
Council DeBon.
Yo.
Council Finn, Council Harris. Council Hughes.
Yes.
Council Forrest.
Yes.
Council Leeann.
Yes.
Council Palucci. Captain Shannon Cole.
Yes.
Council. Yes. What was that?
So this one.
Seven oh one, that removes the $750 from line items, credit chiefs. It was a recommendation question, twenty dollars. All said, Council?
Yes, thank you.
Okay. There is a motion on the floor made by Council Hughes. By Council Hughes to now accept the budget as amended, less the $750. So any further discussion on that one? Seeing none, non-clerk, please call the roll.
Council Kane.
Yes.
Council DeBon.
Yes.
Council Finn. Council Harris.
Yes.
Council Hughes.
Yes.
Council Forrest.
Yes.
Council Leeann.
Yes.
Council Palucci.
Yes.
Shannon Cole.
Yes.
Okay. Eight voting in the affirmative. Chief Barron, you are up now on emergency management. Council, you can find that on page 30, Court.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Continuing the emergency management budget is logically changing. The increase reflects.
There's a motion to move a roll, any discussion on me by Council Hughes, any discussion on the roll? Seeing none, non-clerk, please call the roll.
Council Kane.
Yes.
Council DeBon.
Yes.
Council Finn. Council Harris.
Yes.
Council Hughes.
Yes.
Council Forrest.
Yes.
Council Leeann.
Yes.
Council Palucci.
Yes.
Shannon Cole.
Yes. Eight members voting in the affirmative. Chief, again, thank you for your patience here.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you for your attention.
So, Joel, 792, for coming here this morning as well. Next item on the agenda, Council, is traffic, parking, alarm, lighting. We'll hear from Mike Coffey and then he's on page 36, 37 on the track. Good morning.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman. Good morning, Council. I would like to stop by introducing a few members of my department that showed up this morning. Eddie Grant, who's my assistant. Brent Campbell, who is the superintendent of our electricians. And Fred Souza, who I think most knows the box operation. And with that, I'll review some of the changes that were requested, if I may, to bunch of major changes that were requested, the addition of one junior traffic engineer. We're also doing some title changes. Among those is changing the title from a senior traffic engineer to a junior traffic engineer and also adding my junior traffic engineer. With Frank changing the job titles that we've had for years, from signal maintainers to electricians, from assistant superintendent to electrician as well. We are requesting an increase in overtime by $40,000. Prior reason for that increase is emergency response requests that come in. Our electricians and our traffic operations folks are probably held, I guess, five or six nights per week on emergency responses. It seems to be growing and growing and growing. We've also introduced, under Brent Campbell's direction, a new innovative program to fix some of the issues with the fire alarm systems in our schools and also to stop replacing some of the flashing lights. Matter of fact, the first one, I think we completed yesterday, now that we've been howled. And I want to thank Brent Campbell for this. The mayor asked us to find a better, faster way to do some things and I think Brent stepped to the table to do that. I think the first school we looked at was Lincoln Hancock. I think we had a quota of $25,000 to $35,000 for event coming outside to do that work. Brent was able to get his team of new electricians together to go out there on a weekend, buy the equipment themselves, replace all the equipment, and I think it came at $14,000. We did the same thing at Brown Middle School, we did the same thing at Atlantic Middle School, and I think the end result was saving the tax pay office $100,000 this year. So unfortunately, the flip side of that is we are increasing our overtime to do that against the schools in particular, really have to go on vacation time, well, we just do that work. So we're requesting an increase in overtime at $40,000 for this coming year. Also, requesting an increase in wage, salary wage, temp, we want to bring in another temperature summit, kind of help work through some of the backlog we have on making to request, in particular in the area of signs that are faded, holes that are bent and need to be straight and fast and need relays and so forth. We want to increase police details by $10,000. That's a direct response to the increase in emergency requests to get. Oh, by the way, the increase in emergency requests, I do see, you know, there's logically a lot of traffic lights with the age and the wear and tear on our traffic systems. We have, I think, it's either three or four intersections that go down at the same time it rains. We know why they go down because the conduit in the ground is broken, handle of wire is frayed and it can no longer be taped. So we go out there and we stop these intersections, we try to splice and tape them up and get them going again. We're not really fixing the problem, we're repairing the problem temporarily. As I say, we're kind of MacGyvering some of these, some of these issues. And the concern I have is going to express to me by outside repair people as well as our internal people is the next time we come back to this intersection, we may not be able to get it going. So that's kind of something to be worried about a little bit. So associated, I was increasing police details. We did have a new line item here to repair, traffic signal loops. These are the loops that you drive over when you approach an intersection that sends a signal to the controller that says someone's up this light, can you change a light button? And I think we started this year with over 20 of them. I will be repairing them, we'll kind of cobble together and transfer our money to do that. We want to increase the crosswalk improvement supplies by about $15,000. That's really, again, a reflection of the move to regular oil-based paint to epoxy paint. And epoxy paint, you see, it really jumps out at the evening when you see when the lights hit it. You can see it in the crosswalk now and down in some of the skip lines that we just did a few weeks ago. The reflective capability is really much, much better than oil-based. And by the way, it lasts about five times longer than the oil-based paint. So within another year or two, we will have converted most of our white painting to epoxy based painting and that should be a better handle on maintenance costs. Rather than painting, you know, with oil-based paint, you have to paint every crosswalk every single year. With the epoxy paint, it's every four to five years. So I think we're pushing in the right direction for that. Behavioral supplies, I think we already spent over $20,000 this year on the behavioral supplies that we had to accommodate transfers and movements and other budgets. I think that will down next year a little bit, but I can still believe $50,000 on go. And public works supplies, $9,000, three separate from the budget. And I think that, that is all of the changes we have that were requested.
Council Kane.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. To you, to this prophet, to Mike Carrion.
Good, thank you.
Good. You said a lot of things that you are changing to the budget. I'm very much interested in what went on last year. Last year, this was a big, part of the main thing for the department was created, it was kind of outdated from a few places. It represented a significant increase in overall budget. And so I'm curious to know what happened over the last year, what were some of the accomplishments that you made as a department overall? I'm curious to understand, kind of what's the percentage breakdown of TPAL, the time that you're spending in each of those departments? I heard you just talked about some things from some people, some people that, electrician I think, that will be responding to requests within schools. I'm now kind of wondering where the line between TPAL buildings and W now exists and if there's overlap there. But let's start with, I guess, what are some of the achievements that have been made from TPAL?
Well, thank you for that question. I did prepare some information, fortunately. We started here with, actually, this past year, we've got about 3,000 work requests, which we've plowed over for about 1,600 of those completed. We have about 1,400 open requests right now. Many also broken signs and other issues of that sort, although not all of them. So we have a bit of a backlog. We worked through it pretty well despite some resource shortage, which we had two or three folks out there that enjoyed it and so forth. So we've kind of plowed through that. Very reactive, though, not a lot of proactive work. We would like to become more proactive than we've been.
wording, in that we would like to become more proactive, uh, than we've done yet. So, we've got to take care of our own back end for us, but we decided to move it elsewhere. So, our goal really is to fix everything that's broken, to respond to this, Mr. Kane.
So, I would have said, I mean, we need to take care of our backyard before we.
Well.
The, the backlog or the backyard.
That's what we want, that. I mean, I, I talked a little bit about the school zone flashing lights, we know that just about every school makes some work, you know, for these lights outside, so we've been doing inventory that we started, it is proactive a little bit. Once again, we could, uh, just like Alton Howe yesterday, what we did is we got some pricing from outside, four hundred, probably twenty-five to thirty-five thousand dollars, a higher selling coming in from outside to replace those lights. Uh, we didn't have the money to do that and, uh, under Brent Campbell's direction, we, we got pricing of the equipment ourselves, we bought the equipment and we added, combined with electricians, we did last couple days, doing that for ourselves. So, we're trying to move from being a little more reactive to a little more proactive, but it's quite often a challenge.
How's the backlog managed?
How's the backlog managed? Well, we actually just, uh, we crossed the, committed a new solution, new, uh, work on a management system that allows us to track everyone who's coming in, that I can pull up all the, for the signs you were, whatever, other people, we're arguing that was leading to this bad thing.
That's not in T-PAL?
Well, it's probably seventy-eight-five percent. I've got some issues with it, but we've been tracking our work orders since February, uh, February, March, and, uh, so that's, that's.
So, how was it maintained before?
Uh, it was, uh, pretty much what somebody said. We started in July, we built a spreadsheet baseline.
Wow.
I think we built that spreadsheet up to twenty-two hundred. As you know, it comes unmanaged very quickly, uh, so that's kind of the challenge there.
And so, before you came in, it was in people's heads, you built a spreadsheet out of something?
Yeah, and various lists and pieces of papers and so forth.
Wow. So, where is the funding for this new system? Where'd that come from? Your budget from us?
Uh, my budget, I'll show you, yeah, yeah. I, I think the, the annual cost, uh, probably seventy thousand dollars or nine thousand something. I'd be pretty sure for this.
And who's managing that?
Uh, Eddie running for my system.
The implementation and the management?
And the componenting and the update and everything else. So, we're working on it, right? There's some things that aren't working as we, we helped.
So, have you set any policies then, considering that you're just kind of getting up to speed with a considerable number of requests that have come in and have a backlog of about fifty percent? Have you set any policy in terms of response times, either to requests that come through this body, through the mayor's office, or through, uh, directors of constituents?
Uh, well, I think we have an overarching policy, which is, uh, public safety first. So, you know, if we commit to you to fix four or five signs on your street, you know, we have a stop sign go down, and we won't fix those things first, we won't get that stop sign, because it would be more of a public safety issue. Uh, if we have a street light that's up, of course, we, you know, we should do work on that as well. Uh, so, I think public safety right now drives our priorities. You know, some other policy that, you know, we're moving forward, the, uh, the conversion to LED, so we're trying to slow down the replacement of, uh, the repair of.
When's that started?
Uh, yeah, a couple few weeks ago, we're probably, uh, the next two or three weeks we'll start on some of the, uh, replacing the voltage.
And we just, we just funded that whole thing, so.
Yeah, and the contract, I think, was, was just signed last year for Tony's designs.
But we just funded that three million dollar appropriation, yes, okay? So, then, why here is there money, uh, eight hundred and twenty-five thousand for street light?
Well, that eight hundred and twenty-five thousand, I think it's actually more than that, but, uh, that money will go, that money, the expenditure will go down once the system is fully implemented in a national grid, the building is changed, and that will not be hit, probably because of fiscal impact.
So, the installation is starting soon, but when is, when will the, when will it be recommended by National Grid?
Uh, it'll probably, uh, we'll stop working with National Grid within a month or two after, uh, Antreance Canada, a power supplier, because they'll find that, that version tomorrow. Uh, we'll stop working within after the installation's completion, the installation probably will always be put to late December, early January. There's, um, mop up work that has to be done once the installation is complete, a spreadsheet and an affidavit has to be sent from Siemens to National Grid. National Grid actually comes out, they do an audit, uh, that audit takes some, probably more than a month of schedule, uh, then we get together with those guys and we do a screw-up, and what was concerned in the West, uh, and then they have to go back to the IT folks and change off the bills. I think it's two hundred and twenty, or two hundred and thirty bills, somewhere in that area, that needs to be repaired. It doesn't work as fast as we want, uh, the grid was able to go retroactively when it does happen and, uh, it should reflect a, you know, a sixty, sixty-five percent reduction in power efficiency.
So, this money will be recruited, this eight hundred and, pardon, sixty percent of this eight hundred and twenty-five?
Uh, no, no.
I'm not, I'm not, I'm not clear.
Sixty percent of eight hundred and twenty-five will not be recruited, uh, because the installation will might be complete until December and, uh, I do not believe the National Grid will give us a credit going back to when the installation started, they don't do a rehandoff. Because these are all estimated bills that you're still the ones filed.
So, we're double paying them?
No, no.
We've paid for the installation, the lights, we're not getting any value from that, and then we're paying for the lights?
What's that?
The old lights.
Uh, I don't know, we're double paying them.
Well, I see, I'm, I'm not clear about this eight hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars, I guess, in what we're gonna, what it's actually for.
Well, you'll see the savings from Siemens' LED conversion program in fiscal year. It's a year-long project.
Okay. Uh, it still doesn't make sense, but, uh, I, I think we're listening to some of your accomplishments over the past year, so.
Okay. I want to get back to this.